Regular meeting, September 25th. We have a roll call, please.
Chair O'Reilly, absent. Vice Chair Sofolcannic-
Present.
Commissioner Andrade-
Here.
Commissioner Quilty-
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt-
Here.
Commissioner Gross-
Here.
And Commissioner Lo-
Here.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to give the law and the rights and citizens of America, and to the free public, for which it stands, one nation, under thy eye, and with this law the liberty and justice for all.
Tell them to put their mics down.
Now we have the oral communications. This is a point in the meeting where anybody can come forward and speak to this commission, this planning commission, about any item within this commission's jurisdiction unless that item is on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, please sign the roster on the podium and come to speak when that item is called. Anybody needs to come forward? Seeing no one, okay. There we go. Good evening.
I'm not sure if this is under your jurisdiction, Candace Stewart Drucker. I was just driving here, and I love the Los Alamos Boulevard, and I almost saw a car ran through the pedestrian with the lights flashing, and a couple was pushing a baby stroller through the crosswalk. So I keep thinking, we need a red light there, the kind that's on Bloomfield where you push it when you want to walk. That just gave me the chills. The stroller was hidden behind the car that stopped, and in the fast lane, the other car kept going through.
Thank you for nothing.
So it went longer, and the lights quit flashing while they were in the crosswalk. When the hotel opens, there'll be a lot of that, people walking. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take note of that and move it on. Anybody else want to come forward? Seeing no one, we're going to close the oral communications, and we'll look for approval of minutes. We're going to approve the minutes for the August 28th and April 16th meeting.
Is this for the special meeting?
Pardon me?
For the special meeting?
For the special meeting, April 16th, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have it.
Hold on.
Each one. Vote them separately.
Separately, yes. We're going to do April 16th first. She has a motion?
I'll make a motion.
She made a motion.
She made a motion. All right. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, now we're going to-
How about the 28th?
We're going to do that right now.
All right. Oh, you turned the page here. I thought you were going to the next slide.
Okay, we're going to approve the minutes of the August 28th, 2019 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain. Abstain.
Okay. Wonderful, wonderful. Nothing on a consent calendar. Can we have a staff report on the CDBG funding use?
Yes, you can. Vice Chair Sofolcannic and members of the Planning Commission, the Orange County Housing and Community Development and Homeless Prevention Department, it's a long, long title, requested the city hold a community meeting to discuss the use of community development block grant funds, which is CDBG, is what we often call it. And we are, we should open a, I mean, we have meetings in order to ask people what they feel like they would like to have a CDBG project pay for. And the county provides funds to populations of cities that are under 5,000, and it's commonly used for neighborhoods that have a number of low-income residents or have senior ADA projects. The city of Los Alamos has used the grants for years on roads and sidewalks. You've seen that happen for the last few years. And last round of CDBG applications covered two years, so we'll need to find two projects for the next two years possibly, unless they just have us apply for one year. But this year, we're going to repair Noel Street between Cotella and Farquhar. And for instance, over the next few years, staff has come up with some ideas of streets that we could possibly work on with those grants. And those would be Reagan Street between Cotella and Farquhar, Bloomfield Street between Cotella and Farquhar, Howard Avenue Reagan Street to Maple Street, Howard Avenue Noel Street to Lexington Street. So those are some possibilities that staff came up with that would be good to use those funds on. However, now's the time that we should open the floor to the public and ask if anyone has any ideas of what they would like us to spend our CDBG funds on.
Thank you, Tom. And it's my understanding that the public was notified by the news press-
Yes.
Enterprise on September 11th.
Actually, an advertisement in the paper.
So you're suggesting open up the public? Okay, so I assume everybody heard that. The city's going to be beneficiary of some funds, and if anybody has an idea or suggestion what we would like to see those funds used for, come forward now and speak.
Hello, my name's Debbie Feldman. I live, do you want my address, or do I do the whole thing or not?
Your name is fine.
Okay. I live in the New Dutch Haven area. I also work in the New Dutch Haven area. And our streets have been neglected for quite a while. We're on the corner of Bennington and Tripoli, and we've constantly called the city about repairs. Water seeps up on the areas in front of us, and where many of the areas, on many of the streets, not only in New Dutch Haven, but also in Carrier Row, there's tons of grass growing. The city pays for the, on Tuesdays to have the streets cleaned. It's the biggest waste of money ever. A, all it does is push dirt. It doesn't clean up anything. I've talked to the guy who's running it, and he said, "I'm not allowed to have a lot of water," or "I'll splash out one water," or he says, "If you want to hose down your area, and then I'll come by and clean." But it's really a waste, and I think you, as the traffic commission and you're looking for these funds, should really take a very close look at these streets because tons of grass is growing out from, on many of the corners. It's just getting out of hand. The streets are dirty, they're cracked, and I would love to see a project that would come in and clean up our streets and make them better. And especially if we get rain again and we have flooding on the streets, there's lots of potholes, it hurts our cars, and it's just not a good thing. So I strongly suggest that you look at New Dutch Haven and Carrier Row, and those streets really need to be redone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those we put on the capital improvement projects each year, unfortunately, that neighborhood is not low-income, so we can only spend these funds on low-income neighborhoods, and that tends to be like Apartment Row, that area, or Old Town West is also, part of it is in low-income area. So we have to, we use regular general funds or highway department funds for roads like yours, and those we do about once a year.
It's been neglected for years.
Yeah.
For years. When Ken Parker was our mayor, those, it hasn't been touched probably before then. And it really is in need of that type of thing happening. And because of all the traffic and all the other things, we asked for, not necessarily speed bumps, but maybe speed humps to slow down the traffic in those areas, and it kind of goes on deaf ear. So I would appreciate wherever you can spend those funds, please visit those areas. And especially if you all went out and you looked at the streets, you would see tons of grass growing, and it's just, as I said, it's a huge waste. I'd rather spend money on resurfacing the streets and taking care of the streets than having street sweeping who just shoves dirt around. And it's really a waste of all our taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucy Cushman, and I also live in the New Dutch Haven area. And I would also like to go on record as saying that the streets are atrocious. I actually live in the middle of the housing track on Kearsarch, which supposedly doesn't get as much traffic as every, as the other streets circulating the housing track, because I'm one of the two, Tripoli and Kearsarch, that are the two middle streets. In the middle of the block, on the south side of the street, which is the side that's deeper, where the water goes when the water's building up, there are pitfalls in the, in front of the houses in the middle of the block there that are as big as putting your fingers around and touching your fingers. I am saying two feet by three feet, by probably six to eight inches deep. Now, you might be surprised at that and think, "Oh, that can't possibly be." But I too would ask that you would drive by. We kind of seem to be gotten, kind of forgotten about over there in our little New Dutch Haven. People used to say that, "Gosh, I never knew that little community was there. They're just tucked back in that corner." Well, the traffic seems to know we're there, but the council doesn't seem to. So red flag, it's getting to be quite a nuisance, and as Debbie said, when the street sweepers come, gravel is pitched everywhere because of these potholes. It really is a mess. I'd appreciate it if you would check into that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward? Yes, please.
I also live in the New Dutch Haven neighborhood. My name is Christina Paredes. Actually, I saw this patient walking her dog, I mean, I'm sorry, not patient, person walking her dog. She actually, the sidewalks, some of the sidewalks are uneven, so she actually tripped. Luckily, I happened to be out, you know, in front of my yard, and I actually ran to see if she needed any help. It took her a minute to, you know, get up and stuff, but I'm like, well, you know, it was, it could happen to anyone, you know? She was a senior neighbor, and I tried to help her, and she said she was okay. She was limping as she's walking, you know, home, you know? She said her hip really hurt. She had her dog with her at the same time. And I just feel like I do take walks sometimes around the neighborhood, and I do notice that the actual sidewalks are uneven. And maybe they can take a look at that.
Yeah, we've been fixing a bunch of the sidewalks in that neighborhood.
Yeah, I've seen some of them, but that one, I don't even think they'll touch it because it's not even close to a tree.
Okay.
So I think they're only fixing the ones that are near the actual trees that are lifting up the sidewalks. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one come forward, close this agenda item. Staff has taken notes. We move on to the next agenda item. Do I have to seek a motion or anything?
No, it's just an open forum for a little bit.
Okay, next, may I have a staff report on the Chevron gas station convenience store car wash?
I am within the 500 feet boundary, so I need to recuse myself.
Vice Chair Sofolcannic and members of the Planning Commission, site plan review 1901 and conditional use permit 1902 are the consideration of a reconstruction of a one-story gas station convenience store and then adding a car wash at 5100 Cotella Avenue, which is across the street with 70. The applicant is here with us tonight, Samir Hajazi, and he's here representing Chevron. He is the architect from Arcasance. And the convenience store would be larger than the current one and will not sell alcohol. That's not a plan so far. The car wash is self-serve with the drive-through lane behind it. The project will also reduce the number of gas pumps from six to four pumps, and all paving and landscaping will be replaced as part of the project if approved. Staff advised the applicant that this is a, that a similar project to this was proposed for the site a number of years ago in 1994, and that was ultimately denied by the city council due to concerns with traffic and noise impacts associated with the proposed car wash at that time. The project does, however, meet development standards, setbacks, parking, however, the car wash may not be appropriate for the location. Overall, the design of the building is modern with a few architectural elements, but very few, and so staff has discussed some design ideas with the applicant, and such as stone, siding, trellises, more screen-type landscaping could be incorporated. But the applicant wanted us to present the design as it was originally submitted, so that's what you have in front of you tonight. Staff also made suggestions concerning the car wash. As presented, the car wash line is entered over here in the parking lot, and this is on the south side of the parking lot, and goes around the back of the building and comes out towards Cotella there. And staff had asked the applicant maybe if they could move it over there, but he wanted us to present it the way it is tonight, so that's, it's still that that's before you The applicant submitted a noise study and a trip generation report to the staff, which were very helpful. The noise study has a noise control alternatives in it, and if commissioners were to approve the project as presented, alternative two would be recommended, which is adding mechanical doors that go up and down between car washes. And this, let's see, the concluding statement from the trip generation report notes that there would be no impact with the car wash. It's basically the same people that are getting gas that would get car washes. It was estimated that customers that utilize the car wash would be approximately, on average, 24 per day, and there would be less pumps at this station. It's a larger convenience store and less pumps, and that gas trips would remain basically the same as they are now. Based on the lack of interesting architectural elements and the car wash design, staff felt that we were unable to support the project at this time, and our suggestion is that you open the public hearing, allow the applicant to speak, and then continue this item to the next month, and so he can either, we can either present a resolution of approval, or you can ask him to make changes, and he can bring those back the next meeting. So back to you.
Thank you, Tom.
Sure.
Before opening public hearing, is any questions of staff?
2005 was not, it was not studied for that at all for a car wash. I've searched everywhere for that.
All right, no problem. Okay.
Okay, we're going to open this up to the public hearing. Anybody who wants to comment on this project, please come forward, state your name, and please hold your comments to less than five minutes.
Want to have the applicant go first?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir. Can we have the applicant come forward first? I'm sorry. My apologies.
Planning commissioners, city staff, city of Los Alamos, city staff, and residents, neighbors of the project, good evening. My name is Samir Hajazi. I am the project designer and representative of the owner. I am joined tonight with the project team. I have Mr. Akram Hindia, who is the traffic engineer that prepared the study for the trip generation study. I also have Ms. Angelica Nguyen, who is the acoustic consultant, worked on the noise impact on the project and the surrounding adjacent properties. As stated in the staff report, we are requesting the demolition of an existing structure, which encompasses a smaller C-store with a huge storage area, because the previous use, I believe, before it was, before it became a smaller C-store, I think it may have been a service garage at one point, which, you know, through the years, some changes happened to it, and then they were able to develop a small area where there is a few confectionery items for the customers to buy from, such as sodas and candy and, you know, the stuff that you typically buy at a convenience store. We're also, so we're looking to demolish the existing building, build a new building which encompasses a car wash, a drive-through car wash, and the electrical and equipment room associated with that car wash, for a total of 2,680 square feet. The store itself is probably going to be about 1,800 square feet, and that includes of all the amenities, such as the sales area, the storage area, the walking coolers, the restrooms and all. Perhaps I would describe the sales area itself to be in the average of about maybe 700 to 800 square feet, where the customers and the, you know, gas station staff would be doing the business. I just wanted to start by giving you a little history about the development of a gas station. I think many of us, many of us may find this interesting, and thus the reason why the owners decided to improve, or maybe even other owners before, the current owner always wanted to improve. So the bottom line is, is customer retention and new customer base. The existing improvements, as they are, neighbors are here, I mean, they can describe it as, it's basically a building that is underutilized, that isn't architecturally pleasant, and that speaks of the '60s, basically, with, you know, with very limited use. The canopy is more modern, and I believe that was recently remodeled a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, with some signage. So, so market pressure. Gas stations is a business just like every business. It needs to retain its customers, it needs to increase its customer base in order to survive. And, and, and so the quality of service, the quality of the improvements, and the services provided, and the convenience are really the primary reasons why people remodel and improve. So it is business-driven decision, you know, to basically stay afloat, as people would say. Now, just a little bit about the background of gas stations, or as they were known at once as, you know, filling station or petrol stations, you know? As we all know, we are a, a society that is based on the automobile, and that was decided very, very long time ago. I don't know exactly why, but I think politics and business interests obviously play a lot into, into the issue. So we did not become a public transit society, we became an automobile society. And that's the reason for a lot of gas stations. Probably, if you travel abroad, you're not going to see as many gas stations in other countries as many as we see them in here. We drive a lot, we own a lot of cars, and we need a lot of gas. It's as simple as that. So, so filling stations or gas stations evolved through the time, and a greater, a greater share of the automobile needs started coming into the filling station, thus we call it now service station, because as most of us here are old enough to remember when gas stations were basically a pump or two with a small building that houses a few items, such as oil and distilled water for batteries, and most, and mostly at that time, starting, it was full service. So you drove to the pump, they came and filled your gas, you know, popped up the hood, looked at your engine, they told you you needed a quart of oil, checked the battery, and that's, and that's how the business was. Then obviously, the garage came into play a little bit more and more, and the garage became a main focus of the gas station. So now the gas is less, the garage is more. And as time went by, they added car washes. And car washes, believe it or not, I remember when, you know, in my, you know, 16, 17, when I started to drive, I remember basically a lot of car washes were offered free if you filled 12 gallons or more. I mean, I, I mean, that's not that long ago, maybe 30 years ago, 35 years ago. Other business models in the gas stations included bigger C-store. You see a lot of them today, like, I would, I would say, for example, the Arco AMPM is one of those larger C-stores, where they depend a lot actually on the other items other than the gas, you know, the convenience, the food, they even make food, they prepare food in stations, and, you know, coffee. And as a matter of fact, they sell beer and wine, and I've seen gas stations that are more like liquor stores. So the model kept getting evolving and complicated. So mechanics, C-stores, car washes, co-brands, example, you'll see a lot of gas stations with a C-store, and McDonald's, you know, Burger King, a Jack in the Box. And generally speaking, believe it or not, the oil companies themselves got out of the business of the gas station. Their interest is all, has, had been for, I'd say, maybe the past 15, 15 years or so, into basically just selling the gas, and they're smart enough to develop a C-store brand to sell to the gas station operators. So a lot of the oil companies don't own actually the stores that you see or the gas stations, they just deliver the gas, and it's individual owners or companies, or in some cases even investors, like portfolio, you know, Wall Street would buy several gas stations and make it as part of the portfolio. So as you can see, based on what I have just mentioned, a few, a few trends in gas station, what brings us to the improvements? So these are the reasons why we improve, and that's more or less generally the history of it. So now, let's go to the staff report. So the staff report goes into the analysis of the project in relation to the municipal codes, and on the basis of site plan review and conditional use. Site plan review being with the C-store and the gas station, and the conditional use deals with the car wash. And based on the proposed elements of the project, and the measuring stick here is the city of Los Alamitos zoning ordinance and the general plan, which basically is the roadmap, the vision, the roadmap, the, the, the general map, which is the, or plan, which is the roadmap to the city for the future. So, so the analysis included the surrounding zoning and land uses, and the report, the staff report finds that, I believe, compatible, that the project is compatible. The site plan review, there was no commentary, but I understand that basically it meets the site elements. The development standards, staff report also comments that it's meeting and it's compatible. Access and parking, we meet and exceed. Landscaping, we meet. Architectural design, that's an issue I think that can be worked out. Architectural design, that's an issue I think that can be worked out. This is about the aesthetics and Tom and I have a working relationship anyway, so this is not something that I would be opposed to working with staff on. And just to mention also, and it's not in the report and probably doesn't matter, I did not come into the city with one proposal on the architecture. I actually presented two styles. One is more of the contemporary and the other was more of the traditional, you know, the Spanish style, the stucco and the stone and the roof tile. But we ended up submitting something that is more contemporary because I felt with discussions also with Tom, that this is more of the desired look now at the city. The staff report concludes, oh, traffic. So traffic impact, we find no impact on the, with the development. Noise impact report, the noise impact report finds impact only to the adjacent commercial properties, does not find potential impact onto the residential properties. Architectural design, we talked about that, this is something that we can work out. So the staff report concludes that they are unable to support the project because of architectural style and concerns regarding residential properties to the south. So, but it's not really clear in our report that the impact, there is no impact to the residential properties. And I'll go into a little bit of additional items. So additional items to consider in this proposal, that's not in the report, but this is something that we should, you know, also stress. So based on the existing improvements of the proposed improvements would significantly enhance the area architecturally and provide greater convenience to the neighborhood and the community. The proposed car wash is eco-friendly, meaning the car wash is designed with water reclamation and filtration to be used and reused in a car wash process. So each car wash uses 18 gallons of water, 18 gallons of fresh water. Compare that to washing your car on the driveway. Statistics, and you can check this online if you like, you use between 80 to 100 gallons per car wash when you do that on your driveway. Similarly, you probably would use about 60 gallons if you go to a full-service car wash. The car wash is also an affordable option to car washing. I don't know how many of us go to a full-service car wash, but I typically shell out somewhere between $18 to $25. I have an SUV, so there is a little bit of an add-on, I guess. This car wash will be at $7 to start, so it's affordable. The car wash discharge is clarified and sent to the sewer system versus washing cars in the driveway, you're discharging to the storm drain system with its chemicals, which is a violation of NPDS and carries a fine probably of about $10,000, I believe. The noise generated from the car wash is primarily from the dryer cycle of the wash itself, not the entire cycle. The dryer cycle is typically about 40 seconds per car wash. So based on the overall total of anticipated washes per day, the dryer will intermittently cycle for approximately 26.6 minutes for 40 car washes a day. So it's 40 seconds, a total of 26 minutes in an entire day. That is the noise time, which the report finds not to be, there would not be an impact to the residential. The owners are considerate to the neighbors. No alcohol sales will be sought for this station because we do understand the close proximity to residential and the menace that alcohol brings to neighborhoods resulting from transient and, you know, homeless situations, which is unfortunate. Finally, I think staff refers to a request to provide information regarding a gas station on Cypress and Valley View and the requested numbers, number of car washes and the feedback from homeowners because this car wash happens to be, and it's, I mean, that's a good actually pick from Tom. I think it's an excellent pick from Tom. I did not provide actually the information, but there's a misunderstanding here or slight misunderstanding, not because I didn't want to provide the information, I picked an alternate site that would be compatible with this site on Valley View and Chapman, which the traffic study was based on. And it was completed recently, less than a year ago, actually nine months ago or 10 years ago, or 10 months ago, which is a good site to visit for architectural style, to evaluate architectural style and the type of car wash that is being used because it does have the sound mitigation door in it. And finally, what I would like to say, we are committed to making sure that the end result will not impact the neighbors negatively. As we have the expertise, when we have the tools and the technology today to design and mitigate the issues may be raised tonight. This however requires an open mind and reasonable expectations. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Higazi?
Did you send letters to the neighbors so that you could get feedback from them?
So I did not visit the neighborhood to knock on doors and talk to anybody. Typically, personally, that's not my style. It's just, it's tough for me to, I don't like rejection, I guess, if somebody talks to me about anything. So this is a good forum tonight. I mean, I believe, I'm seeing a lot of people, so I'm assuming a lot of them are here and it is an opportunity for us to have a discussion. In previous projects, actually the city hosted a meeting for the applicant and the neighborhood to discuss the issues and we would be willing to, if the city ever would like to have like a meeting, we would do that. We would be happy to do that. Also, I have an open invitation for anybody who is concerned tonight to visit the site on Valley View and Cypress, which has a car wash that is only 30 feet away from the neighbors, not 170, I think, or 160 feet away. And I'm talking about where the source is of noise, where the dryers happen to be. So we do have, we have a modeled project that we can all visit, we can all look at. And we would be happy to arrange for that.
Thank you. Regarding notice for the record, public notice of this meeting was mailed on Wednesday, September 11th to property owners and commercial tenants within 500 feet. In addition, it was published in the News Enterprise on same date, September 11th. So for the record, there was notice. Mr. DeBolt.
You mentioned a couple of times Valley View and Cypress. I'm not familiar with Cypress Street. Are you talking about Chapman?
I'm sorry, Valley View and Cerritos, not Cypress, in the city of.
If I heard you correctly, you said that staff wanted information about Valley View and Cerritos.
Right.
But you elected to go to Valley View and Chapman as more applicable. Before I ask you, I just need, I want a clarification from staff. Why did you want the one on Cerritos? Is it because of the proximity of homes?
Yes, exactly. We thought if anybody would know what the impacts of that car wash were, it'd be the people in the neighborhood.
Okay, and then, thank you, appreciate that. Just a couple of things in your comments and I have a question regarding in your comments and I have a couple of questions on the report. The water, the wastewater, when it's, instead of going into the street, it's going to be going down the sewer? Did I hear you say that?
Correct. So car washes, they're considered like a plumbing fixture, to simplify things. And so what, the way it works, you know, the car gets washed.
I understand how it works, okay. So I guess, I would like some clarification. I mean, I don't know if, maybe staff knows that that's a correct statement regarding that. I know we have a sewer district next door that handles the sewers for the city. And I know when I was a director on that, our fear was water intrusion outside of the sewer system, okay? And so I, and how that impacts, you know, going down the line to the sanitation district. I, you know, I'm assuming that they're all on board, the sewer district, the sand district and all of that.
Right, we send it to them. And then also the, they have to do what's called a water quality management plan for this project, which goes to a consultant of the cities.
Which we have, we have, we prepared one also.
A couple of other questions. It says in our staff report on page 10 that it is estimated that the gas station customers utilizing the self-service car wash will be approximately 24 car washes per day.
Correct.
So that's what you expect to be the volume?
So that's based on a study that we did. And the model station was, the control model station would be for this site is the site on Valley View and Chapman.
Okay. Not having this information handy, which street has more volume, Catala or Valley View?
Uh.
I haven't to think that it's Catala.
Yeah.
All right, okay. All right, so I, that's fine, I'm just, I'm finding, regarding, I'm reading carefully your, this statement here, that it says it's estimated that the gas station's customers that will be utilizing the self-service will be approximately 24 per day. Okay, that, that's the people that come in and pump their gas, get their gas, and then they go ahead and they wash the car. I find it difficult to believe that you're not going to have a significant number in addition to that that are coming to get a car wash at a reasonably priced amount of $7. I mean, I know where I get my gas and I know where I wash my car and it's not the same place, considering that my gas station is across the street off of Valley View at about quite a bit less than the Chevron station or any of the stations in the area, mainly Costco. So I, but I do go get my car washed at a gas station, okay, that has a, a drive-through, okay? And I'm a lot of times in line on that and, so I'm just questioning the calculation here of times and stuff like that. If in this data, it's based on 24 car washes a day, I'm wondering how.
The engineer who prepared the study is here and he can explain that.
And then where?
But do you remember when I used my example here? I gave you 40 car washes, didn't even use 24, so.
Okay, and then, let's see, the only other I have with respect to question, and this might be for your, we can have, is the sound person here?
Sound consultant, yes, he's here.
Yes, I have a question for the sound person, if she wants to step up.
Can we do this, can we exhaust our questions for Mr. Higazi first?
Just for him? I'm done with him.
Okay, Mr. Higazi, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Would the acoustical engineer or sound person come forward, please?
Hi, good evening commissioners and city staff and residents of the community. My name is Angel Cohen. I'm from the Acoustics Group and I helped prepare the noise study today. I just want to give a heads up, there's a couple errors I've noticed in the report as I'm reviewing it again. So there are just a few number typos as well as a figure that should be replaced and I can send over to the city an updated file as soon as I am able to. But for now, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Well, what, may I ask?
Do you have the, do you have the report in front of you?
Yes, I do.
What page are we going to be looking at?
Okay, so the main issue is we did two studies for Arcasance. We made some assumptions that did change in the second version and the text was not changed, but the tables were. So the tables do not match with the text. So what is correct are the tables.
What page, please?
So page, we'll start, the easiest page to look at is page nine.
So you're saying the table on page nine, table five is correct?
Table five is correct. The text is wrong. It should say 71.4 and 57.2. And then the, at the residences, it should be 45.6.
Excuse me, Tom, did you make note of that?
Yeah.
Are you going to send these corrections to staff?
Yes, I will.
Yeah, send those to me.
Are there any other pages in the noise report?
In the summary, the summary and the conclusion, which just restates the assessment, the numbers are wrong in the summary as well as the conclusion. That's my mistake, I'm so sorry, but we'll get that to the city as soon as possible.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner DeBolt, do you have any questions other than what's been put forward?
Yeah, I have a question. Regarding the noise, the noise control, regarding the mechanical doors at the car wash exit?
Yes.
Okay, about how much does that reduce the noise?
Significantly. So if you look on page 12, that will show you the numbers after you use the mechanical doors.
Is table seven correct?
Table seven, correct.
Page 12?
Yes.
Of the staff report?
Acoustical study.
Am I on the right page?
The noise study.
Right here. Yeah, page 12, okay. So, and where's the change? It's down to 57?
Down to 57.1 at the east property, east commercial property line and then down to 57.2 at the south commercial property line.
All right, and, so if you don't have the door, what is it? 71?
If you don't have the door, it is 71, yeah, 71.
All right. And how many doors are you going to have?
There should be two, one on the exit and one on the entrance. So what happens, we've done this for other projects before, if the car drives in, mechanical doors can either roll up or close, opening like the opening doors, and then they will close when a car goes in, the car will go through and then the car will open when the blower system finishes and then they will leave.
I don't recall seeing in the report a door on both ends.
It's under the north control recommendations on page 16. And 15 and 16, we recommend a mechanical door as a noise control alternative two. Since the city has advised they want a mechanical door instead of the barriers system.
So that's going to be at both, both ends?
Uh, actually, sorry, I'm moving it now, the mechanical door is at the exit where the blowers are.
That's what I thought. All right. Um, all right. Um, that's all I have for questions.
Can I ask one question? So I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. With the doors and to tables five and table seven, the doors don't change it for the residential property?
No, because there is a barrier on the west side of the property, on that western property line. Since there is no barrier at the south of that entrance, the noise will not change for the residences. We did not evaluate a noise control case for barriers. I spoke to Samir, and he's willing to reevaluate, um, a barrier on that curb to prevent noise from going out that way, but we did not evaluate that noise control alternative.
Right.
Anything else? I have a question.
Yes.
Do the doors themselves create noise?
Uh, slightly, but not as much as the blower system or the exit.
Was the, the decibel level of the doors?
That's, it's considered as part of this analysis.
What are, what are the, what's the DBA on those?
Uh, I don't have that, um, in front of me, but I can look that up and find that out for you.
Would you report that to staff also when you give them the corrections on your tables? Thank you. Um, anybody else have any questions for the engineer? I believe there's another party here, um, with the applicant, the, the architectural design.
Yes.
Is there a third person? You already spoke, Mr. Jazzy, was it somebody else?
Uh, he's, uh, traffic.
Traffic. Anybody want to hear from the traffic engineer?
No.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Jazzy, I mean, open up to the public. Anybody, um, does anybody want to come forward? There was a gentleman coming forward earlier, and I got a little out of order, I apologize.
Good evening, my name is Rob Feldman. I live at 11162 Bennington Street in Los Alamos. I know a few of you up there. Um, I, we do a lot with city council, we know a lot of people in the city council. Uh, we live, it's 161 homes that are there, and I don't know where to start after what has been presented this evening. It's a no-brainer. Are you going to sell us out for $7 a car wash? Let me back up. 1995, when our own engineer, 76 Station came in, I was the lead in the committee. 76 Station came in, and they brought, not three people, they brought 10 people. Suits fabulous, I was so nervous, I didn't know what to do. They had their own traffic engineer, they had all kinds of stuff that said, hey, we're only going to have 14 cars. Our traffic engineer did a study, he was the first traffic engineer in the city of Fullerton in 1948. Unfortunately, he's passed away, so he can't be here tonight. But he came up with about 100 cars a day. Let's really talk about stuff that can't be changed. Forget the decibels, forget the stuff, the noise is deafening. I've been to the four car washes on Valley View, why do we need another one? In the staff report, it talks about a destination. Catella is so over-traffic now, it is, it, it's mind-boggling. If I come out of my neighborhood off of Cibony and go on Catella at 2:00, I don't. I try to go up to Cerritos and do that, because, God forbid, Cypress doesn't want any traffic on, in, in their city. So that's, that's one thing, too. The noise is still deafening, mechanical door or not, because there's an issue, that's why they're saying they'll do a mechanical door. It was suggested that the owners come and meet the neighbors. We're being condescending, come on. They had no intention of meeting us, no intention of being part of us, no intention of listening to what our concerns are. Whether it's 30 feet, 40 feet, or whatever, we have clients that are four, that live on that side right by the starting gate, and let me tell you, that would be, just talk about values going down. We could make the, we could pretty it up, we could make things great, we can look like that, but again, we are the neighbors. And at 3:00, when people leave the white building next door, there's 100 cars, Cibony is, you can't get through, you just can't. So picture another 24, picture people coming in off of Catella. Catella in Los Alamos is what, the third most heavily trafficked part of Orange County? You add, you start adding, wait until that 13.1 acres in Cypress starts building, then you look at what, how much traffic is going to be. There's already so much, it makes us all nuts. So those are the things that, that can't be changed. Um, there's so much more to say, but again, I come back to my original comment. Planning Commission, please don't sell us out for $7 a car wash. Thank you very much. Thank you. Would anybody?
Good evening, my name is Jim Kors, I live on Antietam, adjacent to the property here. So, um, I didn't have a whole lot of time to prepare for this. I'm just learning about this tonight. Now, I do know that, uh, car washes like this actually change people's behavior, okay? So people that would normally just drive past the gas station, now they're going to have a convenience store to stop at, and they're going to also have the gas or the, uh, the car wash. So you're going to have the desired effect you want of more people coming into the gas station, however, you're also going to have a reduction of pumps. So there's going to be longer lines filling up the gas station while people are waiting to get gas. The 24 cars you mentioned doesn't include, as was brought up, the additional traffic that's just going to stop in for the car wash. I, in particular, take my car down to the mobile station on Seal Beach Boulevard, and I'll tell you what, there's a lot more than 24 cars a day in that place. And one of the things that, excuse me, isn't brought up here, most of the people that have their car washes, after they go through the car wash, the, the heated blowers don't get all the water off your car. So when the people get out of the car wash, they pull out and they park somewhere, and they bring the rags with them to dry the cars off. So when they pull out of this car wash here, where are they going to go? They're going to spill into the adjacent property. Okay, that's going to impact the owners of the adjacent property. It's going to impact the people that are going to the convenience store right next to it. It's also going to take away business from the convenience store right next to it. People tend to bypass this gas station right now, they only go there if they want gasoline, because the, the actual convenience store doesn't really have a lot. So we're going to have a lot more traffic with the bigger convenience store also taken away from the revenue from the market right next to it. And I just want to tell you, you know, this will change people's behavior, okay? As they look for better ways to wash their car, okay? I'm tired of washing my car in my driveway, that's why I go to the mobile station. This will increase traffic down Catella, and people will get sick and tired of going down Catella, and they're going to spill out on Cibony, which they already do, and then they race down Antietam, Antietam, and go out through the back of the neighborhood. This is already a fact. We've asked for speed bumps in the past, we got a stop sign, but we did ask for speed bumps. But the increase in traffic, uh, and the spillover from the people washing their cars is going to have a direct impact on the neighborhood. Also, what Rob brought up, the value of our real estate. So when you come into a neighborhood and you're looking at the adjacent properties around the neighborhood, you're looking for mom-and-pop type stores, you're looking for peace and quiet. People are going to come into our neighborhood when we have a for-sale sign out, and the first thing they're going to see is a car wash. So the houses that are directly behind that property, people are not even going to want to look at them. Okay, so there's going to be a reduction in property values for the houses that are very near to that area. These are something, you know, you can't put a tangible dollar amount on, but it's going to happen in the future. If they build a car wash, it will happen. Anyway.
Thank you.
Okay.
Would anybody else like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Mike McGregor. I live at 5081 Antietam, directly behind the proposed car wash. Um, to follow the sentiment of everyone else, I just want to, uh, in, share my points, uh, fear that Cibony becomes overcrowded more than it already is. Uh, it doesn't matter if it's 24 minutes, or frankly, 24 seconds a day that I have to hear a blower in my backyard, which is a place that I value as part of my home, where I live. Uh, it's not good for family, not good for friends, not good for pets. Um, people will pour out into Cibony, they will continue to run through the stop sign that is there, and then they race down Antietam to get out the backside, because they don't want to wait for the light. So out of all those concerns and the things mentioned before me, I really hope that there is consideration that this car wash does not pass through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is John Martinez, and I own the property right next door to this car wash, so to speak. And one thing that you didn't bring up is the height of the car wash. Now, the car wash is 25 to 30 feet away from the building that I own. And it, uh, it's, it has two, had two tenants. One was, um, is a horse and tack place, and the other was the FME Federal Credit Union, which they closed up a month ago, and went back to Michigan. And Arrowhead, that was their credit union, and their other place, that they have to find another one. My question of everything is, he's got four cars there, and there would be a space for another, another one, but there was just, all it is is grass, I presume it's grass, it's green, and there's the car wash. And the height of it is just depending upon how big those doors are and how far it goes. If you feel like only looking at about seven cars an hour, you might as well go check in at the superline. Not going to make it. The one that he referred to on Valley View, there must be 10, 12, 13 pumps, and that does the car wash completely. That's what they are, that's what they do. He talked about a convenience store, well, there's one right next door. The problem is, Catella, the entrance from, there's two driveways, the driveway into my place, and the driveway goes into, so they'll be waiting there, or, let me show you. They would be coming here out of the car wash, going straight across this way, back on my property and my building, so they can wipe their car down with rags and, believe me, that's a place ideal spot to take your cigarette butts and throw them in the, for the owner to wipe them. This is the same thing that happened 15, 18 years ago, I was here, and they had the same thing, type of, uh, but they, and they had a car wash, and they had the, uh, presentation for the, the fast food place, and plus the gasoline. And all I can always remember, one thing about that, that gas, that station service station, when we had problems with the, the gas pump, we couldn't get gas, we only limit five gallons or 10 gallons, that's all you could get. They fell the car and fell all the way down in front of the parking lot, so that didn't help anybody. I was against it then, I'm against it now. Any questions, I'll help you out.
Thank you. I think I saw somebody else in black.
Again, I'm Lucy Cushman, and I live at 5112 Keersarch Avenue in Los Al. I am right around the corner from this so-called fun zone. Um, all the above, I agree with everything that everyone said, in addition to the fact that the appearance of this gas station, convenience store facility is not the problem, what it looks like. People don't build dumps. They always, things always start off looking pretty. They're painted, they're new, everything, the grass is green, the plants are ready, everything looks great. Five years down the road, not so good. 10 years down the road, even worse. Especially when nobody can do anything about it, it's privately owned property, and there's really not much that can happen. And that's assuming that it's a, uh, a business that is doing well. If the business does not do so well, you can very much expect that the area is going to depreciate in appearance even more so. I don't love the idea of coming into my little beautiful little housing tract with a car wash on the corner. Yeah, go up, uh, Keersarch and turn left at the car wash. Not thrilled about that. But the noise is a factor, the traffic is a factor, the concrete is a factor, the, the sound to our neighborhood is a factor. All of these things are, are factors. This is where, this is my home. I've lived here 35 years, this is my home. I don't need another car wash, I really don't need another gas, top-dollar gas station. But the gas station's been here, I can tolerate that, okay, it's already been there. I don't need another convenience store. There's a lovely convenience store that actually does sell alcohol, so it doesn't really matter if they sell alcohol or not, because right next door, there is a very nice liquor store that we try to patronize, because they do live in Los, or they are a business in Los Alamos, and there aren't that many, uh, businesses in Los Alamos. So those of us who live here, we try to use and patronize the businesses in Los Al. There's also a 7-Eleven store just up the street. We don't need a mini mart, we don't need a convenience store, we don't need a car wash, and if you're trying to get more business to the gas station, why would you drop the pumps to four and build a car wash? I, it, it doesn't even make sense. Please consider the neighborhood when you're making your decision about this, but it's just... Again, we live in this small little place where nobody used to know where we are, and now, one minute we get kind of forgotten when it comes to fixing the streets, but yet now we're going to be, you know, a place where everybody comes for their $7 car wash? And does that mean that it's going to start at $7, and next year it's going to be eight, and the year after that it's going to be nine, and two, five years from now it's going to be 12? And do you have to fill your gas tank in order to get the special price? There's so many considerations that it's, 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 like Rob said, it's mind-boggling. It's mind-boggling at the thought that this would even be considered. Please have consideration for us, the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, Debbie Feldman on Bennington Street. Um, so I just want to readdress a couple of things. So if it was 24 cars, we're talking $168 per week and a total of $672 a month. I don't think you would want to redo the whole thing for that low amount, plus now you're down to four pumps. So that's not making you a lot of money. And the, the construction, the design, all those things, it's not prudent. So it doesn't matter what your traffic person is going to say, and try to say there's not a lot of cars. We know that you're going to have at, at least probably 400 cars a month, and that's what you're going to go for, or, or even more. And if you were only going to limit it, let's say, to 24 cars a week, would you cut it off? Would you stop that business? I doubt it. The second point, um, is cars cause pollution. And with car washes, and you're talking about noise of, I think you said, something like, without the doors, it's 71, with the doors, it's 52, whatever that means, without the car wash, it's zero. So let's keep it at zero. Catella, as we've already stated, is a very busy street, and the morning you can barely get through, from 3:00 on, it's a sitting parking lot. Um, this is just a really bad idea, and back in the day when our neighbor Walter, who Rob talked about, talked, they were going to build an 18-foot wall behind the homes, and Art, as a, I don't know if you still practice real estate or not, but being in real estate for over 25 years myself, I know that the values will go down. It will immediately hurt those homes, and I doubt that you would live behind a car wash that you would build.
Ms. Feldman, Ms. Feldman, please direct... Ms. Feldman, please direct your comments to the commission. Thank you.
So I don't believe that any of you would want to live behind a car wash, or you feel that your values will go up, go up as a result of that. So again, please consider this neighborhood, consider what's being asked, and really read between the lines, because I don't believe what you're being told is actually true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you bring up that layout again? I just, oh, here it is. So I just wanted to show them. So this here, is this the brick wall that already exists?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you come up and state your name again, please? I'm sorry.
My name is Christina Perettas and I actually live right behind the gas station, but I'm just concerned about-
You're allowed to go over there if you want.
Okay. I want to show you.
Oh, can you take the microphone with you, though? Sorry about that.
I know this is American Idol, but okay. Anyways, so our home is actually directly, I want to say, behind here. And I just want to make sure that the picture, can I see the picture of the new layout? Does that new layout, is this the brick wall that's-
No.
Where is this, where does it end?
Right there where your finger is.
Right here?
No, down further.
Down further?
Right there, right there. Where the end of that-
Down, down, down.
No, 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 no.
Down there?
Right there. No, no.
Here?
You have the block where that car is, right there in that-
Okay.
Go down till it stops, right there. That's your wall.
Okay. So-
Correct? Is that correct?
No.
No.
No, the wall's right here.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
So is it going down all the way towards the wall?
Oh, I got you, yes.
Is that, is that what I'm, like the greenery, is that like the landscape, is that there?
This is what exists now.
Okay, but then from the new picture, is it going all the way down to that?
No, because there's a parking lot behind that.
Okay, so this is the parking lot?
And that's, yes.
Okay.
That's that gentleman's-
So my concerns are, I agree with all the neighbors, but my concerns are that the cars that will be going in and out through that car wash, I'm looking at like toxic fumes. How long will the cars be sitting there, you know, with time? Toxic fumes to me, also toxic chemicals. What kind of chemicals are they going to be using, like to, you know, for the car wash? Those are my concerns, like the emission of these cars coming in, waiting. My other concern is also, I mean, I know they did some kind of noise control, but that was without the car wash. It doesn't really specify what that noise will be like. I'm sure it'll be even louder than, I'm nervous, but anyways. Also, the trash, you know, people will be, you know, tossing their trash, their cigarette butts or whatever. Also, any sitting water, I mean, I know we already have a problem with like mosquitoes when it's humid or this, any sitting water. Also, my concern too is with time, those chemicals, can it damage? I have children and they play in the backyard. And my concern is those chemicals and fumes that are going to be on, you know, ongoing through there, will it damage, you know, my family or other families respiratory, will it be a danger to their respiratory system? Another thing is, my husband, you got to take consideration, some people work different hours of the night and they don't want to be hearing these like doors shutting, these cars going through. Also, like you had mentioned, that people will go dry their cars on the side of the shopping center that he has. There'll be music, people playing their music while they're drying their cars. Oh, I forgot to toss this out, so let me toss it over. I mean, it's bad enough, we've had shoes tossed over our, on the side of our wall, clothes, cigarette butts, bottles. I mean, those are all concerns. And I have been to the, not the gas station or the car wash, I passed by there because I go to that Pollo Loco, that's right next door where he's talking about the Cerritos and Valley View. And it also attracts homeless people, just random, you know, people that we probably don't want in the neighborhood. I mean, I have a lot of concerns. I don't even gas up there, I go to Costco. I'm a Costco mom, you know, and that's my thing. And I know they're saying that now they're not going to be selling alcohol for now, but in the future, if they do sell alcohol, that could also attract a lot of, you know, young kids or, I don't know, that are like 21 that want to drink and party all night, also bums, like I said, you know, people hanging out. I mean, for me, I just think that you guys should take us into consideration that have families and live there. And I just don't want to hear doors shutting, people, you know, engines going on and all that kind of stuff, you know, while that car wash is there. I mean, I just don't think that a car wash would work there. And I, I don't agree with them saying that, you know, there might be only 25 cars. I don't believe that. I mean, it could be more than that. So that noise can be ongoing on the weekends and we're losing a lot of our privacy by that being there as it is. You know, I just feel that sometimes I've seen people pee on the wall while I'm driving by, people stealing my neighbor's lemons, you know, just a lot of things that I see just around the neighborhood. So I don't know, I just think it'll be a bad investment to have that there. You know, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Townsend. I live in New Dutch Haven on Mendorah Street, so I'm not right behind the wall. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Most of my questions have been answered tonight. However, some of them raised new questions and some of the previous speakers have raised new questions. Just now Christina mentioned noise, that's not from the car wash itself. The people going to the car wash, opening their doors, closing their doors, their music, maybe their, who knows? So that's something I hadn't even considered. But I do know, I live on a perimeter portion of the street and when there's noise in the businesses on the other side of our wall, sometimes you don't know where it's coming from. You don't know if it's bouncing off that building from a neighbor or if it's coming from the business. If a neighbor's being noisy, you can't necessarily tell because there is so much concrete and stucco that the noise bounces. So it's not just limited to where it is. And most of these homes only have five or six-foot walls. And all those buildings are higher than five or six feet. So whatever noise there is, is going to be bouncing, ricocheting off the buildings into their yards. So it's not just the specific noise from the car wash. There was a mention of 45.6, which I assume was decibels, at one of the corners with the doors down. Well, my dishwasher is 44 decibels, so I could live with that, but that's not what's going to be facing the homes. And when I started hearing about the mechanical doors, I couldn't help but think about, oh, if it doesn't get oiled, it'll start to squeak, it'll start to make other kinds of noise, you know, flap, 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 squeak, 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 ee, ee, ee. And this is something that happens without proper maintenance through the years. Things start out silent. Well, I have a new oven and it's not even a year old. And now I open the door, ee, ee, ee. I mean, this is a brand-new oven and I don't use it every day, but now the door squeaks when I close it. So what's going to happen with a great big mechanical door? The other things that I was concerned about on behalf of the neighbors is the traffic flow. I am no longer employed, so I don't have to worry about getting out onto Cotella at rush hour. But that light is timed so poorly that when I was still working, I was very lucky if I was the third car in line to be able to make my left onto Cotella. And that was if all the cars ahead of me, both cars ahead of me, were aware and started their engines and started going forward when the light would turn green. So I don't understand how cars coming, the additional traffic coming out of the car wash will be able to cross Sebene to get up to the light to go onto Cotella. So those are just a few of the things that came to mind after I thought my questions had been answered from some of the comments of the other neighbors. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I want to bring it back to commission for any discussion, questions. I have a question of staff. What is the height of the building?
Oh. Okay. 18 feet, they're saying.
18 feet. In event I, in event I did not, for the record, the public hearings closed. Okay. Any discussion?
I have some concerns about the project. I do, it does bother me somewhat. It's not just up for us to send out notices to the neighbors about a project coming forward. If you know that your project might have some resistance from the neighbors, I would hope that the applicants would, would have taken time to try to reach out and see what kind of things that they could help to resolve. We've had that in the past and typically when an applicant reaches out to the neighbors, it's a much better thing that's going on. We don't have the amount of people here concerned. The other thing that I have, and that's the city. The city did give you some recommendations on wanting to have it look nicer, more aesthetically pleasing, and you didn't do that. You didn't bring applications forward to us. It should come to us, it said, this is how I work with the city to make improvements. So those are a couple of concerns. But when I really look at this car wash, the setup, these are my concerns. I have stopped here for gas. I frequently would come in off of Sebene. To get into the car wash that sits now means I want to get out on Sebene. So you have to come in through the front and I loop around the back, which is going to become challenging if there's car wash is now in the way and it's going to increase the traffic on the back, which makes it difficult because getting out, like people said, there's a lot of traffic on Sebene. It's unreal, the amount of cars that come in and out of that little center or that, that neighborhood from behind. And yeah, the traffic light there could be fixed, it is a problem because it does back up. If, just even with four pumps, we're going to have traffic problems in the basic part of people just getting gas that come off of Cotella and they're going to end up exiting either potentially right back there at the light or off of Sebene. So you're going to have some traffic issues that are going to come in and out. Now we have people who say, well, we're going to stop at the store. So they come in and want to go into the store, you're increasing the traffic flow either onto Cotella or onto Sebene, which is going to make it challenging again. So I see some issues that I'm concerned about with cars getting bogged down, gas pumps that are usually generally full, they're pretty much so, especially because the racetrack is right by. Now let's go to, right near the area, we have the new 55 senior homes or older that Cypress has put in and that's going to increase the flow in that area too. So we're going to get a lot of impacts of traffic without doing a car wash in that area. That I think is going to put the noise level for the residents awfully high and it does concern me. Not just the traffic, the difficulties, but how this would work out, putting in a car wash, a convenience store on a corner, already impacted with none of that. And I watch it all the time. The fluid traffic is not conducive with this setup. Going in and out of Sebene is not conducive. Regardless of just the sound, that in its sense, sense to me is unfortunate for the area and we've got to be very cognizant. I don't want neighbor, the people there to feel bad. I don't want them to be impacted with a lot of sound and noise and have their lives disrupted from something that we can make a decision on and should have been reached out to by the applicant before even coming to us. So I see some problems with having a car wash, just the car wash in itself. And just to put it bluntly, I walked down to a couple of these car washes and sat out and watched. The one down here on Sil Beach Boulevard, Mobile, they get a lot of cars that just come through that are not getting gas right now. And the thing is, they fixed it up to make it very pleasing for people to come in. And then they have to have cars that are going to stop to vacuum. So they have another area sitting there with vacuums. That sound noise is going to impact these neighborhoods. It isn't just so much the drying, it's the cleaning out the inside of the car. So there's a lot of factors that go in here that I don't think we're all thinking about. So I'm not 100% sold on this particular project, but it has to do with the increased traffic flow, the design to get in and out of it, and the fact that we have other areas building up rapidly around it that are also going to be impacting this area.
Thank you. Anybody else, do you have a question?
I just had a question. What's the distance from the, just curiosity, from the, their landscaped area to the rear fence of the properties? Is that about?
From, across that, that's, let's see, 24 plus 9 plus 9, 18. Like 40 feet, something like that.
All right.
Yeah. And by the way, the height is 19.5 to the top of the parapet.
The measurement from the grass area across the parking area, is that what you're referring to, to the south?
I want to go to the fence, but from there-
To the residential.
Yeah, from the grass area to the residential wall, it's about 65 feet.
65.
Just measuring it off of Google Maps.
All right.
What's the height of that wall, the rear wall?
60.
I, yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah.
Anything else?
Comments?
Comments?
Comments? Well, I have a couple of things, like Commissioner Gross, apart from the no outreach to the, to the residents, you know, staff tried to give you some direction a little bit, wasn't followed. I, along that same line, I guess I'm a bit concerned, staff requested, you know, consideration for the location, to look at the location of Cerritos and, and Valley View. And I think primarily because of the proximity of the homes, which would be comparable to the situation that we, we have here in the proximity of this proposed use to the, to the homes to the south. And rather than do that, the applicant chose to direct his, and direct us to the Valley View and Chapman as being more representative of what, what's going to happen there. I would say, I will say that I, I did drive by, I went over there today. I saw it in the staff report, thought I'd just go ahead and take a visit. I'm familiar with the one on Cerritos. I didn't know that, I'd have gone up there, but I'm already familiar with, I know the area. But, and I found that the, the proposed use here is, looks to be virtually identical to the, as far as the car wash, as the, as the one on Chapman, or excuse me, on Chapman and Valley View. And I'll just give just a few of my observations, which kind of has prompted some of the questions. In particular, the, the assertion that it's going to be 24 cars, 24 cars. I was there for approximately 15 to 20 minutes. I know because I was on the phone the whole time. And so, and I'm standing there listening, I'm, can you hear this? And I'm holding the phone up. When I got there, there was a car in the, in the car wash with the blower going. And I was about, I was about, I figured about 70 or 80 feet away. I tried to get far enough away. And it was a clear shot, right down, right down the drive aisle. And in the course of my time on the phone there, I was there about 20 minutes, four cars went through the, through the wash. Okay, four cars. And, and, or I'll say, yeah, so there was four there and that was in about a 20-minute period or so. There was one in there when I arrived and as I was leaving, another one drove in. So about four. And I suspect that there's going, I just find it hard to believe that at this location here, that it's going to be limited. It's going to be 24. I've got to think it's going to be some number quite a bit more than that. I think, I think we're a little wanting in the report there on, on the data. Especially further, when you get into the study, it says that there, there's four cycles per hour. That's 15 minutes on a car wash. That ain't going to happen. I mean, that's, I sat there and watched, at a minimum, three cars go through in 20 minutes. The placement of the door, I'm not a sound engineer- The placement of the door, I'm not a sound engineer, I have nothing to do with that, but, you know, logic and common sense would tell me that if, if we keep these doors shut at the rear here, not a whole lot of people are going to hear what's going on if they stand behind the door. But if you open the door, our conversations are going to be pretty well heard. And, and your, you know, any noises are going to go out that way and not that way, not behind us. So with this car wash oriented, with the entrance to the south, all the noise, and that's where I was standing, the noise was, I mean, I stood there and I'm listening to that. I'm on the phone and I can't hear, I can't hear the person talking because the blower's going, and I'm, and I'm about the same distance away. And this is in a, this is in a large area where I'm standing, out there in the parking lot behind the, the gas station over there on Chapman and Valley View. So it seems to me, if anything, mechanical door's in the wrong location. And I walked around, or drove around to the front, rolled my window down, and the door was down, just out of curiosity, I was watching that. And yeah, it was a lot quieter, but there's no houses across the street. I mean, that's a completely commercialized area. There are no residences, front or back, which is probably why Cerritos and Valley View probably would have been a better, a better choice to conduct your studies and stuff like there, to, you know, for comparison. I don't know that you could put two doors on it. I mean, if you're driving your car in there, your engine's running, you, there are no, nothing to grab your tires and pull you through. You're going to, you're going to drive, drive in, and your engine's going to be left running. You're going to have to have the doors open, or else you're going to have to have some kind of ventilation to suck everything out of there, or, you know, you're liable to asphyxiate somebody who's in there. So I find it troubling also that when I read the staff report, and it talks about, you know, making a, on noise control alternative two, with the mechanical door, the car wash level expected to be reduced to 57.1. That's fine. Great for the car that's parked on Cotella. Okay? I mean, with his, with his window down, waiting for the light to change, at least he doesn't have to, you know, listen to the car wash while he's listening to his radio. Okay? But to the homeowner in the back with the door open, getting the brunt of all the noise that's being generated, it'd be kind of hard to play with your child in the backyard or do anything with, you know, the noise going off every, you know, I don't know how long, every four or five minutes, six minutes, however long you have a car wash throughout the day. So I find, I find that statement in this noise control a bit disingenuous, you know, in reading the staff report, until you, you know, yeah, you're reducing the noise level, but not where it counts. And, and here we are, you know, we have to make a decision based on information put in front of us, and I don't like, I feel like I'm kind of being led down a path that's just not quite, not quite, I'm sure it's accurate for what we have here, you know, 24 cars for the people who are pumping gas, what about for the public? You know, that, that kind of, that kind of parsing of the words, you know, I don't, I find, I find troubling. I don't, I don't like that. Unless you read it carefully, it's like there's, you expect us to believe that there's going to be 24 cars a day in here. I can understand 24 cars out of the number of customers at the gas station, because you probably don't, you obviously, you're not going to have that many people coming through the gas station, I guess. So, but you're going to be depending upon the, the draw of the gas station, I mean, of the, the car wash, okay, to, to fill in the gap there. I think that's just, that's probably about it. I'm, I, I mean, with, with respect to real estate values and stuff like that, yeah, these are all negatives, and I'll just tell you how it works. It affects the, you know, it, it affects the value of the homes behind, and that diminished value of, of depreciation or whatever flows through the entire neighborhood, because all of your values are based upon comparable sales and what, what's happening in the neighborhood. And, you know, properties that, that are along a perimeter street, along a commercial property, you know, they generally sell for less than those that are on the interior, and therefore, they drag down the values of everybody, just, just because of their proximity, okay, of where they're located. And likewise, homes that are more desirable farther in action, you know, improve the value, you know, it, it all has a, an effect. But to add this to it, I mean, looking at a pure, from an economics point of view or value, yeah, if, if you further reduce the value of homes along those perimeters, you do have a rippling effect, you know, throughout, throughout the neighborhood. But for me, I, I, the noise, the noise factor to me is, is huge, and unfortunately, the example you cite kind of supports my, my conclusion, and, or at least my inclination at this point. And I guess that's about it for me. I'm, I'm...
Anybody else?
I'll just make a comment, instead of a quick comment. I've heard about the, we talked a lot about the car wash, and I understand a lot of the things were brought up. I'd be curious, and this is just an open comment for the future, is that as many gas stations are going away and being repurposed as a, as a, as a commercial property, I wonder what should go here? I wonder what would benefit the neighbors, what the neighbors would like to see go there at some point in the future. I mean, I'm just saying, as we have these discussions and as this comes up again, I wonder, because that would give property owners understanding, too, of what they would, that they think about the property. So I'd be curious to know about those things, or, and neighbors' opinions of that, and from a real estate standpoint, what would benefit the neighbors, what would benefit the community, if this didn't stay a, a gas station, because I've seen a lot of gas stations go away and change uses. And one of the changes of gas stations is going to more of a convenience store gas situation, so we see that a lot. That's kind of a natural progression. So I'd also be curious to know if, if this was just a convenience store and gas station, would that be suitable without the, without the car wash? Because I think we've, we've definitely talked about the car wash, and I, that's very clear that neighbors don't want that, and there, the neighbors have said, some neighbors have said about the convenience store, too, as a, as a negative impact. But I'm wondering if this was just a convenience store and gas station, how people would feel about that, and what people would feel someday in the future, what this, what this site should turn into, into the future. That's just a comment, just a general comment for, you know, future discussions and so forth. That's the only thing I was thinking about most while I was listening. That's it.
Thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments. When I read the staff report, I was surprised that the applicant didn't take the opportunity to follow the advice and direction of staff when they suggested that, that they consider reconfiguring the, the car wash so that the exit and the entrance ports were facing east and west, which prevent the sound from going directly south into the neighborhood. They failed to take that into consideration. They also ignored staff's request to consider some aesthetic upbringing, upgrades to make the property look better. And they also failed to give some information regarding a nearby car wash, ignored staff's request for that information, brought it forward tonight. So I was surprised at that. And I, after reading the staff report and hearing all the testimony tonight, my, my inclination was to, to recommend this be brought back, allow applicant to bring it back after hearing the comments tonight for further consideration. But after hearing everything we heard tonight, and some of the comments and testimony from the residents, there's a possible different course of action. Instead of requesting that applicant bring this back, I think I have the authority as the, as the chair, vice chair, is to direct the development services director to either prepare resolutions for approval or denial. And maybe that should be a discussion here at the commission, if we, what, what of the three courses of action do we want to take? Do we want to give the applicant an opportunity to bring it back with reconfigured possibly without a car wash, or reconfigure the car wash, or do we just want to take appropriate action, or, I shouldn't say appropriate action, do we want to take decisive action tonight and direct, have the director prepare a resolution, denial, or a resolution of approval? So...
Well, for, for purposes of discussion, I'd make the motion that the, we direct the community development director to prepare a denial of the project, and this is the second time we've had, visited this, and things don't change. I mean, the houses are still there, and it, I'm, based on what we've had here today, I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to make a, a motion to deny the project.
So we have a motion to deny. We, we should entertain further discussion?
A second, Ed?
Okay, before we take a vote, is there any further discussion? No? Okay. I, too, join that, the motion in the second, in the sense that we have visited earlier. Project came to us premature, without applicant following staff's direction. What resulted tonight was a, a community outcry regarding significant concerns of the project, so we have a motion to deny, or to have the director present a, prepare a resolution of denial. And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Is that it?
Mr. Vice Chair will, will act accordingly. We'll take the comments that were provided and establish findings to support that, that, as I heard it, one of the, there were a couple of primary concerns, one of them being a circulation concern and potential impact to, not only the existing proposed site, but surrounding properties and streets. The challenge with the issue of noise is, is the report that's provided identify compliance with condition, or with mitigation established, but I heard circulation being a key issue, as well as just the overall design in concern with its, its, what was proposed to you. If you have anything in addition that you think should be incorporated of the findings, we would like to hear those as well.
Would you want to hear them now, or would you want them delivered to you?
Now would be, would be appropriate if possible. So we, we do need to draft up, obviously, findings to substantiate and justify any, any decision that's rendered by the commission, so...
Well, well, we all heard pretty similar concerns, noise, traffic.
I think, I think, I think assumptions, assumptions that were made that, that seemed to be, as far as I'm concerned, they're, they're difficult to comprehend that a, that a project, that this is going to be 24 cars per day. I don't know, that's understatement of the, of the assumption. And, and then the, the mitigation, the mitigation measure that was proposed is, is a mechanical door on the exit, and that, that does not address the concern of the, of the noise going to the south.
What I would ask the staff to do, if it would provide the information you need, is just look at the record, maybe take some of the testimony form, I believe there were eight residents came forward to speak, and some of comments from the applicant and the acoustical engineer.
Correct data, et cetera.
Thank you. So, thank you, everybody. We're going to have a quick break. It's, it's, we'll come back in 10 minutes.
10 minutes.
It'll be 8:55. We're going to reconvene, and we are moving on to... A second here. We're going to move to... Oh, yes. B, site plan review, 1902. Site modification improvements to two existing commercial buildings in the addition of a pedestrian bridge. Can we have a staff report, please?
Chair, Vice Chair Self-Lucahnik, and members of the planning commission. Site plan review, 1902, is the consideration of site improvements and facade changes associated with two office buildings next door to City Hall at 3131 Cotella Avenue. The applicant is here with us tonight, Rand Roser of Epson America, right there. Mr. Roser submitted a, an application requesting that the planning commission approve the following. New parking layout and parking spaces added, landscape improvements, a pedestrian bridge connecting the two buildings, new glass storefront windows, and a new entry canopy on one of the buildings in the back, new exterior doors, relocation of certain parking lot lights because of reconfiguring the parking lot, a new emergency generator, a new trash enclosure, chain link fence improvement, new flagpoles on Cotella, and new bike racks. There will also be major interior improvements, of course, with them moving in, but that's not under the purview of the commission. It's really the outside that we're looking at tonight. And the existing 9.4 acre site has two office buildings that total 150,342 square feet. A driveway is located on the eastern portion. Let's see, where am I at? There we go, there, eastern portion over here, and the city uses that driveway as well. There will be times in the day when these people that are visitors of the city can use this parking lot after hours and, you know, before hours. So for evening-type classes and stuff like that, they'll be able to use it. There will be an entrance over here going into the recreation center area. Then there is the western one right here. This is where they'd like to build the bridge across to connect the two buildings. They plan to keep that closed most of the day as a gathering spot and a crossing area, but during evening rush hour, they've suggested that they would like to open it up in the evening and allow people to drive out through there. Let's see, the 520 parking spaces currently exist, and Epson plans to increase the parking to 648 spaces. Pretty nice magic trick there to figure that one out. And five of the stalls are tandem. 602 would be required if it were built today, so they're, they're well exceeding that. A mechanical parking arm will be installed in the driveway to the main parking area for employee access. It's up here, or up here, sorry. And I've already said that. Okay, the, the bridge will be constructed in a modern industrial-type architecture. It'll have steel column supports, a metal-cladded walkway, and a railing system that has mesh inserts between the railing uprights. Let me see if I have a picture here. That's the first, here we go. It has been raised over the driveway to a height of 13 feet 6 inches, as required for fire truck clearance. The style of the building should remain, however, they're, they're changing, you know, windows and, and doors and things like that, and putting a canopy in front of this building over here. And according to the site plan, landscape area is total 20%, so they've got that covered. They'll be moving the trash cans, so they're going to bring those up to standard with a roof on them and things like that. It's the new standard. And they are also bringing in a generator, which I've said already. It will also include smaller elements, elements like the relocation of parking lot lights, the, no, I've already said that. I'm sorry, I keep repeating myself. Chain link fence that surrounds the property will be repaired in the places that it's broken or, or in disrepair, bent down and things like that. The, the new bike racks will be spread around the, the buildings in different spots. The new bike racks will be spread around the buildings in different spots. And staff recommends that the city review the traffic circulation every, I mean, after the first six and 12 months, just to see how it's working out with them and see if there's something else that can be done. If it's a problem, it may not be. So those buildings have been there for years, so hopefully there will be no problem at all. Staff recommends that the commission open the public hearing, receive any comments from the public, and then approve the applicant's project with the conditions noted in the resolution.
Thank you, Tom. Before I open the public hearing, is there any questions for staff?
Mr. Vice Chair, if I could just add just a couple of really quick items. I wanted to mention that a lot of what's happening at this site is interior, so a lot of it is not within the purview of the commission. There's a tremendous investment being made by Epson in these properties next door, much-needed aesthetic embellishment enhancement and cleanup around the exterior. But the vast majority of the effort will be interior to this site. There'll be approximately 600 employees on that location. And that, the reason I mention that is, as Tom mentioned, we've been working with Epson with regards to traffic and circulation associated with this. They're more than willing to work with us and make future enhancement and improvements, but their point, we concur with them, is let's not make those unless they're shown that there's a need for it. So that's our position, too. We want to work with them. They're going to be longstanding residents of our community, and we think that's a great position to take, to be able to assess and analyze and watch what happens again over the next six to 12 months, once they open their doors.
Thank you, Les. I have a question, but I'm going to ask the applicant. If I need to follow up, I'll ask staff.
I'm just curious, the traffic flow between the two buildings, that's both directions? It's in and out?
So the, that's an emergency vehicle access route is what it's designed for. And they will open it up in the afternoon hours for egress only. So the ingress, as they've identified to us, based on their current operation in Long Beach, the ingress isn't all at once. It's not like an ADM starts, everybody shows up at that point. It's more over a period of time that people come in. There's a greater concern that we've had with regards to egress and the signalized access point out here on Cotella. So they're going to open up that emergency vehicle access after 3:00 in the afternoon to allow for the right turn exiting out of the site for the evening hour, for afternoon and evening hours.
All visitors, then, will park before the gate that opens up?
Yes, that's correct. There's 30, I should know the number, we worked that out with them. I think it's 35 spaces that are before the gate that will be available for visitor parking. That parking is also going to be available for city use after hours. So be it a special event occurring here at City Hall, we will have overflow parking available to us. They're also going to be providing an access point, a rear access point to the community center, so it'll be opened up during evening and weekend hours for direct access into the backside of the community center.
You just answered my question.
Has there been any investigation into, with the mechanical arm, possibly creating any backflow into, back onto Cotella if it's not either a not working properly, or that so many people are coming in at the same time that it's taking a while for people to get through the gate?
Talking of stacking.
Yes, stacking. I mean, it does look pretty far back, but just, I mean...
It is. The stacking, I'm guessing, I don't know the exact distance, but you're probably 15 to 20 car stack to that gate, maybe more.
Yeah.
I know that other locations where I've seen that type of an environment has far less, maybe two or three cars. I know there's a handful of businesses in Cypress, for example, that have a gated environment that's much shorter. I would anticipate, also, there's 35 parking spaces there, too. So if something did happen, they could even queue some more cars in that area temporarily.
I see somebody in the audience wants to speak, so I'm going to open a public hearing. And if you want to speak about this, please come forward. Is this the applicant?
Yes. My name's Rand Roser with Epson America. And first, just wanted to thank you guys for taking a look at our proposal. We really are looking forward to move to Los Alameda's to have our own home. We think we'll add a lot of value to the community. People will be here going to the restaurants, using the local merchants. But on the tone of what you were talking about, I thought I'd chip in a couple of things. Number one is on the parking arm, as people come in in the morning, our plan would be to leave it open. So during that, you know, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. period, we'd leave the arm up, just so there can be a constant flow in. Really, the arm is really more intent for after-hours and things like that. Second is, as Les mentioned, we're not a real 100% of the people 8:00 to 5:00. We have people coming in at 6:00, we have people coming in as late as 9:00. So it really is kind of a staggered event. We also, we think this is a positive, too. We're not a 7 by 24 operation. So for example, I came in Saturday, 11 o'clock, there were maybe eight or nine cars in the parking lot. So I don't think you're going to see, we're not going to generate much traffic on the weekends. We're not going to be generating a lot of traffic at 10 o'clock at night because we have shifts and people leaving. This is our sales location, so we have a lot of people that are working remote. Our facilities person reminded me, usually we only have about 80% on, in the facility at any one point in time. So when you think of 600 parking spaces, at any point in time, we probably only have 80% of those. And since we're trying to hire more millennials, we are developing more work-from-home, one or two days a week, more carpool programs, because we know that's really important to people. So we think that will help minimize the traffic congestion, too.
Any questions for the applicant?
No. I was just curious, I don't, the overall cost of all these improvements from day one, do you have any idea of what that number would be?
About $30 million we'll be putting into it. That includes furniture and fixtures, too.
Gotcha.
Yep, about $30 million.
Just, there was a mention in the staff report about the, your lights in the front? Have you been mentioned, did they mention that? The brightness?
Yeah, there was a mention. Those were established by Lincoln Properties, the property owner. We just referenced that. From staff's standpoint, it really is not an issue. However, we have had a couple of comments mentioned to us since the installation. I would say that really, from my perspective, it's a nice aesthetic out front, but we at least wanted to mention, since that was, we have received some comments about it.
We would have no problem ramping it down some. Like I said, those were put in by Lincoln, so we don't have a problem in terms of that.
Whatever staff's recommendation is, it's fine with me. No other questions?
No.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience want to come forward and speak?
I think all of them.
I suspect. I got that impression. Well, nobody's coming forward. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion.
First off, isn't it nice to have support?
Yes.
From my viewpoint, I thought the building, once you guys started taking over and it really got cleaned up, I got to tell you, it's beautiful. It's really looking 150% better than it has in a long time, so I'm very pleased with it. I don't have any qualms with what your presentation is, and I'm just happy to have you.
Thank you. I think we've exhausted the discussion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
If a motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
When do you think you'll move in?
So our goal is next June, July. So we are just wrapping up in the next couple of weeks here, construction documents to get over to the folks here to look at. We've already shown them copies of our interior space plan, so they kind of have a sense. But we're really not building anything unusual in there. It's mostly office space. We will have a, what we call a customer briefing center, which is more for when our customers come, we'll have some of our product that they'll be able to see. These aren't retail customers, because our customers might be Best Buy, or Staples, or people like that. So there will be an area inside with some of our products on display. But other than that, it's really office space. We have a small data center area, but it's...
I don't even remember how many square feet, maybe 2,000 square feet data center?
It's relatively small, just to support the area. But other than that, it's small cafeteria. The bridge we're really putting in, because we want traffic between the buildings. We didn't want people to feel like, well, I'm in the A building and you're in the B building. We wanted it easy for people to walk back and forth, and we think that bridge makes it super easy. I can just walk from the second floor of one building to the other.
Yeah.
But yes, next June, July is what we're shooting for.
All right. Don't forget the open house.
You know, we've talked with Les, you know, we want to be a part of the community. I know we talked about once, there's a, I guess, a neighborhood art exhibit that they do once a year. And the comment came up is, hey, could we maybe project the artwork winners onto our building, you know, and put a sign up? We'd be more than willing to do things like that.
You should look at some of Tom's artwork, then.
Put it up. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move into the next agenda item. It's number 8C. This is the zoning ordinance amendment, general plan amendment. We need a staff review on this.
Vice Chair Sofal Kanek and members of the Planning Commission. Zoning ordinance amendment 1704 and general plan amendment... Let me move this forward here. I didn't do that. Oops, there we go. And general plan amendment 1901 are once again discussed tonight. We've talked about these many times, but first, three general plan amendments are considered for recommendation to the city council. First is clarification that the professional office general plan designation also allows retail and service, retail and service commercial uses in addition to the office use. Number two, elimination of the limited industrial general plan land use designation and replacing it with the planned industrial land use designation. And three, an amendment to the multi, multiple-family residential general plan land use designation to reduce the maximum density from 30 to 25 units per acre. The three general plan amendments were affirmed by the, affirmed for consideration by the city council through a resolution of intention. The process of formulating these amendments has been determined that the land use map is also required to be changed as part of this, so I can show that later. You know, as we are removing the limited industrial zone and incorporating it into the plant light industrial. In addition, the city zoning map is being considered tonight for recommendation to the city council. The changes to this map include the creation of a town center mixed-use zone, the elimination of the limited industrial zone, and the addition of the live-work overlay zone. Following the recommendation made by the Planning Commission, a small language change has been identified that clarifies an intention of the Planning Commission, which was that the first floor in the town center mixed-use zone, it will be just those units that face Los Alamos Boulevard and Cotella that would be required to be retail, not the entire first floor or anything like that, or those that are back off the street. And so within, those that are face are within 100 feet of Los Alameda's Boulevard and Cotella. If the language that you've seen and that we've provided in the report doesn't reflect what you feel like it should say, we can bring that back to the October 23 meeting and also discuss that then. And also, as a last-minute correction, it was found that the note saying medical uses in the planned light industrial zone must be incidental to the industrial use, that had dropped out for some reason in those, so we've put that back in. So if that's not what your understanding is, please let us know. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission open the public hearing, affirm the two environmental addendums. You've already affirmed one, number one. Number two was before you tonight, as sufficient for SEQA in these cases, and adopt the resolutions of recommendation to the city council for the general plan and zoning map changes. And also affirm that the corrections that were made to the language in the draft zoning code are as you intended them to be in the first place. So back to you.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for staff?
Just to confirm, I know I mentioned to you about the, those properties that are off...
Right.
Okay, so that, the ground floor, they're not required to have retail, as long as they're...
If it's facing Los Alameda's Boulevard or Cotella...
Okay.
And it's within 100 feet of those streets, yeah.
Okay, and that should cover...
Then that would be required to be retail. Everything beyond that can be mixed use.
Right.
Yeah.
So, quick question, following up on that, so is that like at the corner, the one that used to be Keller Williams?
Yes. That one's actually back beyond 100 feet.
So does that mean that that doesn't have to be retail?
No, but that address is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, it's, that's, I'll let him talk here for a minute. He looked like he had something to say.
No, that's, to be honest, that, within that area, that was the intent, that if it's more than 100 feet back, which the Keller Williams building is, it would not have to be retail. It would be available for other uses. We're not only trying to address it based on the existing environment, we're hopeful that there'll be a new built environment in the, you know, in the future, to where it would be a true mixed-use type of a design. And the idea was to make it mandatory along those fronting arterios to have a retail face, but as you venture back off of that, that you can change to other uses. It just, it would be, in our opinion, excessive if the, all of the first floor within that area had to be retail. It's just, with the retail environment, the way it is and the way it's heading, we just don't see that. We'd rather see that out on the arterial, getting that direct exposure by the vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic that's occurring on those two arterios.
So if they wanted to come and put medical back in there, it would still need a CUP? Or would it no longer need a CUP?
Let me bring this up. Where is it? There it is. I think it can't be there anymore. Let's see.
We can look that up real quick, and if you have other questions, we'll come back to it.
Thanks.
Well, while we're doing that, well, I'll wait, because I'm going to open the public hearing.
Well, I have a question. Okay, so are we doing this by buildings on a parcel, or are we doing this by the parcel? Because, I mean, if you have an owner that owns a parcel of land, and he has two or three buildings on that land, and it's within, it's within a, you know, the address is a Los Alameda's or a Cotella, you know, an arterial address, okay?
Our intent...
I know what your intent is, I'm trying to get to the, so we have a clear understanding. Are we, are we saying the zoning for a particular parcel, or the uses for, within the parcel can be different?
That is correct. Within the parcel could be different. It's not parcel-specific, it's geographic only. If you have, within 100 feet of those arterios, if you drew a line, imaginary line, 100 feet back, along the Los Alamos and Cotella frontage of those properties, if you have a building within that area, or a portion of a building within that area, it has to be retail. If it's further back from that, it could change. Or you could even, if maybe it's a multi-tenant building, you could switch it out to where if the back portion of it were greater than 100 feet, that could be non-retail. But you'd have to have a retail exposure within 100 feet of Cotella and Los Alamos, regardless of parcel. So again, if you get back beyond that, then it could be open for other uses and not be exclusive to retail. But our position on it was, make sure that aesthetic appearance, if you will, along those fronting streets is retail-specific. So again, if you had, if you had a long building greater than 100 feet in a multi-tenant environment, it could switch to non-retail as you get further than 100 feet back.
All right, so then within, the way we had been, I mean, prior to this, our ground floor retail, or in the CG zone, retail zone, you're allowed to have up to 15% non-retail. Okay? And that includes, if you're on the front, including if you're, if you're fronting the street. So, and we made, we have made that site, I'll say site, specific. Now, are we just going to building specific? So if, if an owner has, if he's got a total of 30,000 square feet, okay, ground floor, let's just say, okay, 30,000 square feet of ground floor, and it's, part of it faces Cattella, I mean, and then you go farther back, on the same parcel, in the same zone, he's got another multi-story building, then, and it's more than 100 feet, he does all ground floor office, non-retail. Does that then eliminate the 15% allowance on that within, within, you know, on the street? I mean, it's kind of like you're...
No, that's, it's still 15%, can be office in the, in the bottom floor, yeah.
Did you keep that?
We did keep that, yes.
Doesn't that seem, where I'm, where I'm, just where I'm, it's just a, I don't have, I understand where you're going, so I, I'm okay with that. But, to me, putting my city hat on, to the extent this is a city agency, and also thinking of the people that appoint us, okay, they have a burning concern for revenue, okay, rightly so, since, you know, we have, we have a shortfall. It seems to me that we want to protect your retail to the greatest extent that you could, because that's how you derive part of your revenue. I mean, I mean, the land, I mean, I don't care, as a landowner, I really don't care where I get my rent from, and whether it's a retail use or a, or a office use. We're the ones, or the city should be the ones that are concerned about sacrificing the retail uses. You know what I mean? So, so, I mean, I don't know if we should revisit then the, but then I hate to do that, because now you look at, you look at non-retail uses that need, kind of need the, the exposure to a certain extent, or that are already there. Now instantly, they're non-conforming. If you, if we try, if we give up the retail going farther back, then we probably ought to tighten up the retail on the, on that, which is within the 100 feet. You know what I mean? I mean...
I mean, again, this is just a town, this is just a town center zone, which, I shouldn't say just, it's, it's the heart of our, I would say, the heart of our, kind of the core
Right, right.
downtown, of what downtown we have. But, but our, as it's identified in the general plan, as we hope to be able to further describe later with other documents, the idea is to intensify use in that area, hopefully someday, as property owners redevelop those, and bring in true mixed use, that is more, far more intensive than what we have right now. That, again, that frontage along the main arterios is retail-focused. The, the challenge comes, as we've heard, we've heard from one past applicant, but we're seeing trends to this effect, is as you get back behind that, without that exposure, those can be the toughest locations to rent yourself.
I agree with you. I'm not, I'm not arguing with you on that. I, I agree, but I guess my, my question is, then do we further restrict within that 100-foot, if they're facing the major arterial, then we should not even be allowing up to 15% of non-retail? If I, I mean, if we're going to give it, if we're going to give the, if we're going to give relief to the back, should we be tightening it up in the front with the idea of hoping to get a retail use there?
15% is pretty small.
Well, I agree.
It's pretty small. I, yeah.
Back to the medical office. It's a CUP on the bottom floors, and up to, it can only be up to 15% of the, the first floor. So, medical, you know, has to go to you guys first, so.
Right.
So, the medical is still 15% limited?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just throwing that out, just, I'm, I'm okay with what, what you're proposing. I'm just giving this as food for thought, and if it's not, if we still want to preserve 15% because there are certain non-retail uses that need to locate on a boulevard, let's just say, then...
There may be.
Yeah.
I, I think it pigeonholes us a little bit, if, if you don't have that little...
That little bit gives, okay, so, we can, I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm not...
It's small enough that I think, and, and here's the thing, if you get enough retail, retail's going to bring more retail potentially. In other words...
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the appropriate use will go in based on what's around it, I think. To a certain degree, it kind of works itself out in that regard. I hate to have a situation where you can't. We almost live in any way we're in. So, anyway.
Okay, all right.
You both?
I'm good.
Good. I'm going to open a public hearing. Seeing nobody coming forward. Since there is no...
By the way, that's Jose back there.
Yeah.
Since there's nobody here, and nobody coming forward, I just maybe for the record, wanted to point out that this public hearing was noticed, September 11th, News Enterprise, and additionally, notice was mailed to all properties that experienced zoning district change. So, the notice was given.
Yes, and Mr. Vice Chair, if I can add to it, I'd like to mention, not only was notice given, Tom, in, in June, sent letters out to each individual property, identifying the change of zone that was occurring, filled a number of calls, met with people, talked with them about it. And I think that's probably a testament why there's, there's really nobody here. He spent a tremendous amount of time explaining this. So above and beyond our standard noticing, there was a lot of staff time spent on this, and wanted to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you, Tom, for your efforts. Appreciate it. I did notice attachment three, exhibit C, there's one, two, three. Two pages front and back of properties that had to be noticed, so it's quite an effort. Again, thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
And she mailed them. I wrote it, she mailed it.
So, we had exhausted discussion. I'm not sure how to proceed with regard to these recommendations. You want to take them one at a time?
You can take them one at a time, if you'd like, or just move staff's recommendation as to the...
Can I do it that way?
Yep.
Just lump them together. So, since the discussion's exhausted, is there a motion to move staff's recommendation forward?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much. This has been a very long process. I know it definitely predates me, doesn't predate Tom, though. But it's been a long process these last two-plus years. And thank you very much for sticking with us, with our consultant team, and, and having the patience to venture through this. And we'll take this forward to council, and look forward to finalizing everything and, and moving forward.
Thank you, Les. Thank you for your efforts.
Thanks for the hard work.
Uh, let's see, we're not done. Okay, number nine, discussion, anybody? Items from the development director?
In light of the time, I'm only going to mention one item, and that is what's noted here, is a change in meeting dates for our November and December meetings. They are in proximity to or directly conflicting with holidays. And we would like to propose moving those both one week earlier, which would be the 20th, I believe, November 20th, correct? And December 18th.
November 20th, okay.
That 20 may be an issue. Does that, do they have that whole week off, Los Alamos?
I don't, our kids are graduated.
I don't have kids. Mine are a long time ago.
November 20.
I'm on grandkids.
Yeah, that looks okay.
Yeah, I believe the, the following week is the week of Thanksgiving, and that's why we didn't want to have the meeting on the 27th. It's, it's the eve of Thanksgiving. A lot of people are traveling or have children home, so we were, we were thinking the 20th again, and then the 7th, excuse me, the 18th of December.
I do not have a conflict.
Yeah, that works.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Michael?
It's for me.
Everybody?
Have fun.
We'll, we'll proceed accordingly then. Thank you.
Commissioner reports?
I have a concern that I'd like to see what we couldn't do about in the future. Plants on the parkway that are obstructing the view, so if you are exiting alleys and you can't see oncoming traffic, I think we should take a look at the height of these plants. And that, I know we've got that problem in my area. I wouldn't want it in other areas, and I find it to be somewhat dangerous. We've talked about this before, where we were limiting, we tried to limit it down to, I want to say, two feet, and I think it's at three feet, is what Tom told me. And so, I would like to relook at that, because exiting an alley or anything that you can visually see oncoming traffic, to me, is not worth it for a plant.
So you want to lower the...
I want to lower it, yes.
Okay.
And again, we should...
That's because you're in Corvette.
Well, you know, I have an SUV too. I've got a few cars. I have an addiction. Windows, I agree that we might need to also relook at windows and advertisements, so they're not blocking, and the percentage of advertisement down there. And thirdly, I really hope that when we have this plan that we just discuss, go to the city council, that they understand how appreciative, not only the planning commission is, but the community is for all the work that Tom did on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further, yes, Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, just one thing. The lady that came in earlier at the front end of the meeting regarding the crosswalk that jogged through, okay, it's just, it's interesting. I, I was talking with a friend of mine who lives near the high school, comes to work that way every day, and I guess he just about nailed somebody. He said, what? He said, I can't believe that there is a crosswalk there. He said, somebody's going to get killed. He said, there needs to be some type of, he, he just said it's in the wrong spot.
Yeah.
Why is it in the middle of the road? I mean, he, and, and I don't know that I necessarily want to have any more lights, and flashing lights, and stop signs, and all that garbage. I mean, I, I think we need to maybe revisit that, and maybe make it a planner or something. Let people cross it.
That's traffic commission.
That's traffic, isn't it?
Is that us? No, we approved that project.
Yeah, I mean, the issue, if there's a concern with safety, the commission, the traffic commission would be the body to consider that. The, the addition, we, we added the, the strobe device, if you will, onto the, the signs. I've seen it at night. They're, at least for me, they're very attention-getting. One of the things that was mentioned, which we are looking into, is if you get mid-block, which just happened to me, I actually walked it, and you get mid-block, and if there's, you still, just because there's a crosswalk doesn't mean that people walking in it, they still need to be alert and attentive to vehicles, because not everybody yields properly to, to, you know, somebody in that crosswalk. But you get to that mid-block point, and you may have to wait for, you know, oncoming cars, and the flash or the strobes, that time period can lapse. So we're looking into is a, is a push-button device in the middle at the, at that center spot. So, that may have been what happened, what they referred to. People will walk through, they won't get all the way across, the strobes will, will stop activating. And I agree, without those strobes at night, it's, it's definitely dangerous. But, again, from my observation, I certainly welcome your input. When those things are going, they're, they're definitely attention-getting.
It sounded like she said somebody had stopped, and then, in the next lane, they came through.
Didn't stop.
Didn't stop, is what it...
Yeah, that's what she said.
That's what it sounded like. So that, that, I don't, the one person did, the other person was probably supposed to stop and didn't. So, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why I guess she was suggesting that there be a light there, so that somebody would actually see a light and stop versus, I mean, who knows what happened. But that's, I think that's what she was maybe alluding to in that, in that particular instance.
We'll definitely take, you know, continue the observation at the staff level. I'll mention it. We'll definitely see about getting feedback from the traffic commission regarding it. I'm just concerned if, if that, I don't know if you've seen it work at night with the strobe activated?
They're bright.
If you can't, my opinion is, if you're not seeing that and are blowing through that, we've got some pretty serious concerns.
It's not during the day.
That person behind, even during the day, I've, I've seen it operate during the day.
That's right.
It still gets your attention. It's a, they're a very bright, directly oriented LED light that even during the day can get your attention. So, in fact, I first saw it.
Because I haven't noticed, and I, I haven't, I haven't noticed any strobes at all. I mean, is it something that's running all the time?
No, it only runs, you have, there's a push button on the sign to activate it.
Oh, okay.
Right. So, and hopefully the person's activated. I mean, there's clearly a push button right there, but it's at, you know, their discretion. They have to take the time to push the button.
It sounds more like somebody not paying attention on that particular instance.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll definitely keep a close watch on it. Anytime we hear comments like that, we want to make sure it's...
Of course, are they thinking it's a stop? When you push that, are they, are they thinking the traffic's going to stop?
You mean pedestrian, yeah.
Yeah, you would assume.
Yeah.
They might, but there's clearly no stoplight there.
But it's not a stoplight.
No.
So, I mean, it's a light flashes. I mean, if somebody's driving along and doesn't know what, one, if they don't know that there's a crosswalk there, you wouldn't expect it in the middle of a...
Well, we have, again, it's, well, I think it's pretty well delineated, but, but we'll certainly, again, we'll, we'll definitely, I'll talk with the traffic commission, we'll bring that up the next meeting, and, and I'll definitely talk with our public works group in our, about it. And also talk with our captain to find out if, what their observation's been from there, you know, from our, our police patrolling through that area as well. So we'll definitely increase our engagement and feedback regarding it.
Yeah. On that same note, I was just curious. I seem to witness a lot of stacking into the Rossmore car wash under the, under the road, especially on the weekends, it gets pretty busy.
Yes.
And that's, I know that's Los Alamos patrolling that area too. I don't, I don't know what the legalities are for cars that are stopped, waiting to go in there, and not deciding, hey, I'm not, I can't get in off the street. Are they allowed to stay in the street? Are they not allowed to stay in the street? Is that something that we should patrol a little bit more? Or not patrol a little bit more? I don't know. I, I seem to see it on the weekends a lot, but...
Good question. I noticed it this last Saturday morning when I was in town. So, I know we did look into Commissioner Gross's question about the parking on the street, and the traffic commission did review that previously, and chose not to, not to eliminate that parking that's there. But that's a different matter from cars that are actually out into the number three lane, blocking, you know, blocking traffic. But, again, I'll mention the, that to our, our captain, and see if, you know, our patrols can be watching for that. Again, I noticed it Saturday morning when I was here, and, yeah, Saturday mornings are the, that's probably the peak time for that business.
Definitely on the weekends, yeah.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do to keep an eye on that.
Do we have jurisdiction there?
We do. The street's ours.
Is the sidewalk ours?
I, I don't know. I don't know where it ends.
I think it is, yeah.
Because the way that the entrance is for them is also a challenge for those guards. So they really have to bend over, loop out and around to come in. We need to take and kind of share it off a little bit. It's not going to take, it's not going to take anything away. They put a cone there right now to warn people, so they don't get damaged under their car. But the way it kind of angles, if you look at it, it doesn't make sense. You've got a right turn that is really come up and turn in a little.
Those are definitely important points, that if there's any type of a land use matter associated with that site or improvements, that would trigger our ability to impose conditions, we certainly would. At this point, there's nothing that we could do. I mean, they obviously are acknowledging that it's an issue. They're putting cones out, but there's nothing that we can do to force them to have to make a modification, unless there's some type of a, a land use action that they process with the county.
That's it?
Yep.
We're adjourned.